Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Apologize if not on my, it's not printed on my agenda here. All right.
You have my agenda.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to improvise here a little bit. Mrs. Eubank?
Here.
Mr. Bennington?
Here.
Miss Larimer? Mrs. Downs?
Here.
Mr. Pullman?
Here. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's not on here. Kelly? It's, it's not on there, so. No matter how many copies you give me.
Well, at this time, we'll take a motion to adopt a proposed agenda.
So moved?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Kelly.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, and that would be the superintendent's report. Mr. Hostler?
Yes, thank you, and good morning, everyone. So when we plug this into the agenda, talking about the winter and safety update, talking about the winter and safety update, we had no idea that we would actually be bringing a bit of winter this morning, so it's the coldest morning of the school year. So with that, Assistant Superintendent Price and I wanted to spend a little bit of time this morning talking about, obviously, the weather and what that means for school and some of the decisions that we have to make as we get into that season, and then ultimately move into a conversation about overall safety, because weather is just one element of overall student safety. Before we do that, I wanted to share, it's with weather, it's always interesting because people have a lot of fun talking about it. So especially here in northwest Ohio because of the change, and it's not always agreeable to many of our desires when it comes to what we want with weather. And so it's, and one hand, it's kind of a fun thing to be talking about and to speculate about what it may mean. And we went into the archives, and I wanted to share with you, just to kind of capture this. So we had a friend that made a recording on behalf of the district, and we played this on opening day with all of our staff. So I thought it'd be appropriate to share as we talk about the weather today.
Meteorologist Blizzard Bill Spencer in thirteen ABC, First Morning Storm Lab, Perrysburg, tell me it's not true that you've diminished your calamity days down to three? Cancel all that stuff. There is horrible weather on the way for the next two years, and we've been tracking this on LiveDop or thirteen thousand radar. You look at this, and you only see a couple of things on there. Don't be fooled. Let's take a peek at the latest satellite photo. And I've been tracking storms for the past twenty or thirty years. Can you believe that? Here's what's going on. You see that circulation across eastern areas of Canada? That has been circulating up there since nineteen eighty-five, going all the way across Canada. And then what happens is stops across the Alaska slopes, turns around, and comes right back. I've been tracking this thing, trust me, for years. What's going to happen is this thing is going to eventually slide down right on top of northern Ohio. And what am I predicting? A ton of snow. Let's not exaggerate, how about one to two, not inches, not feet, but tons of snow during the upcoming winter season with lots of blowing and drifting, and also lots of dropping wind chill factors. At this rate, with only three calamity days, you'll be going to school through the year 2012. Can you believe that? So keep it tuned right here for Blizzard Bill, right here on thirteen ABC, in the storm lab. We're gonna keep you up to date. But three calamity days with all that storminess, not gonna cut it.
So, so weather is something that, again, we'd like to have fun, and we have some great meteorologists in the area, and Blizzard Bill certainly was a good sport for kind of egging us on at, at the start of the school year. So, so when it comes to weather-related decisions, obviously, there's a lot of things that, that we have to consider. We know that as temperatures begin to fall like a morning like this, that we know it's, it's on its way. And, and so we wanted to spend a little bit of time reviewing our process in terms of cancellations and some of the other things that are involved with that. On any questionable day, we can count on one thing. And the one thing that we can count on is the fact that no one will be happy and no one will be in agreement with whatever we decide. So there really is no right or wrong decision in a sense of, you know, trying to weigh what the community thinks should happen. And, and so when we go and do the things that we have to do to determine whether or not we have school on a particular day, it's a little bit liberating because no matter what decision we make, you know you're gonna hear from people who disagree with that. So you can really focus on making that best decision based on the, the conditions. So on a, on a, on a questionable morning, the transportation director and I both check the roads personally, and that's something that I think a lot of people often don't think about. Well, how does that happen? So the transportation director and I both kind of divide the district, and, and then we have kind of routes that we take on each side of the district to, to get a feel for the conditions. The township police does a great job of letting us know if there's a weather event that's happening with their officers. So if they see something overnight, we'll get a phone call about four AM from the dispatcher saying, listen, it wasn't anticipated, but, you know, that rain is now freezing, and you might want to get out early. So when we're watching Blizzard Bill or another meteorologist in the area, we want to, we, we know when the weather's coming, but there are those mornings where we're not, it's not anticipated, and then it's here, and that can cause problems. So having those eyes and ears from the police is, is really important. The district is twenty-eight square miles that we encompass, and any decision that we make when it comes to weather has to be done by six AM. So, so we have to assess what's happening, not only with the roads, but we have, we have to look in the crystal ball and see what's coming in the next hour, two hours, because we begin to pick up students, not right at six AM, but right around seven is when the buses begin to roll. Six-thirty, they're starting to move out of the, the transportation area. So decisions have to be made at that time, because once we get that process of picking up students started, you really can't stop it. There's no way to reach students that are at the bus stop already. So you have to get to them before they go, you know, and head out. So we must also consider what the conditions are going to be during dismissal. So it's not only what's happening in the morning, but getting the kids to school, but it's also getting them home. And we don't have many comments, you know, when weather, weather isn't just isolated to mornings, it's also happening throughout the day. So very rarely do we get calls about, you should hold the kids in school longer, like a two-hour extended day until the weather's better. So we never get those phone calls. So, so getting kids home is, is tricky. The other impact that it has, because we run routes where we, with flights, so we drop off one group of students, and we come back and pick up another group. If the roads are very bad, and delivering the first flight, getting the buses back to that school is a challenge. And then that can cause delays with dismissal with the old, with the, the next flight of students, which would be the elementaries. So the student's safety is, is our first priority, and there's some things that we consider when we evaluate the roads. So one thing that's always, that weighs heavily on our minds is we have hundreds of teenage drivers that are navigating the roads. Many of them, this is the first winter that they've ever driven. So, so that is always a concern. Parents always have the ability to, you know, have their children be dropped off by themselves or take the bus. So that, that is a factor that we look at in terms of student drivers. But when it is, you know, tricky, parents always have that right to, you know, today I'm gonna drop you off, I'll drive you today. And, and we encourage them to, to check and monitor the weather conditions. We look at how safely cars and buses can stop. That's a, that's a real important aspect of, of what we do. Being able to, to come up to a stop sign and safely stop or take off from a, a light is important visibility. Fog is a big one for this. Fog is very tricky because fog actually rolls. You hear the fog rolled in, and when you're out checking the roads in the morning for, and fog is what's on the radar, it, you, you can see it actually moves through the community. So in some areas, it's clear. Twenty minutes later, you can't see a quarter of a mile or less. The, the weather forecast is vital, and, and again, the meteorologists and getting information from them. Out in northwest Ohio, the wind and drifting, it creates havoc. So in, in another part of the state where the wind isn't a factor, one or two inches of snow, not a problem. But here, with two inches of snow and thirty-five mile an hour winds, depending on what time that is, that can create a lot of havoc here, because everything is so wide open when you get out of the boundaries and into the city, or into the country. The temperatures and wind chill has been something that we've had to face too, in terms of very cold temperatures. And then how the buses function in that sub-zero weather. A few years ago, we had a streak of sub-zero days, and, and, you know, buses don't operate so well in, in those conditions, and, and that's a factor. We don't want a bus to be in the middle of a route and then stop, and then having students, you know, on that bus in traffic, that's, that's a hazard. Also, the students that are waiting for that bus to come, being out in that sub-zero weather, being exposed. So there are some things that we look at with temperatures. And then we look at how the, the townships and, and the city is progressing with their, with the cleaning of the streets, because that's important, because at six AM, if we've seen them out and they've been doing a great job, we know those next two hours, if they're gonna continue to work, they can make a lot of inroads, especially if the weather event is coming to an end in the morning. So that's when you get into a two-hour delay, where in two hours, things are gonna be much better because the weather is stopping and the, the crews are doing a great job. We rely on four different entities for our streets. It's not just the city of Perrysburg, but it's also the, the county, because we have county roads that go through Perrysburg, and it's Middleton Township as well as Perrysburg Township. So there's four different entities. So in those mornings, when it's a busy morning, you'll see four different kinds of plows that are, or crews that are out there working, and they all have a different philosophy. We know that it's not the main roads, and we hear from folks that get out of their garage, they drive a block, they get on a main road, and they head into downtown Toledo for, for work or some other destination, and the roads are clear. What they don't see is the other twenty-seven square miles that we're responsible for and what that looks like. And, and so some of the main roads get that priority. So when you make it to that main road and it's all clear, it's because the city, state, townships really focus on those roads. But all of those neighborhood and network roads, they get touched, they're, they're secondary priority. Not all of our students live on those main roads. And, and that's always a, a, something to, to consider is, is that, you know, getting to those students where we need to be. All of our buses navigate neighborhood streets, county roads, winding roads, roads with, with steep ditches. I remember when, when I was working in, in Michigan, it was, you know, some rural areas very similar to Perrysburg, and we had one of those March days where there was some moisture, and then overnight the temperatures fell colder than what people expected, and those back roads were just sheets of ice. And the main roads that were paved, because in Michigan, we had not paved roads, all of our roads, and we had a two-hour delay. And I had a, a parent who called and left me a voicemail message saying, you know, I got up and I, I look out the window, cars are going posted speeds. I don't understand why you delayed. This is very inconvenient, the normal kind of conversation that you heard. And then about a half hour later, there was another voicemail message left. And it was this parent apologizing because she was taking her children to her parents who lived on one of those back roads, slid right off the road into a ditch safely. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, but understood the reason why there was a delay and, and felt, with everything going on, felt she needed to apologize and said, good call. Buses are rolling intersections. So when you think about it, oftentimes, you'll see plows and, and trucks that will salt like intersections. They'll do kind of a loop, and they'll do extra time, because it's really important that cars stop at those intersections. Well, buses are rolling intersections. So those points between the stop signs where they dump a lot of salt, there could be five intersections that we create in, in, in that space. We have to rely on cars that are coming down those roads, seeing the bus, seeing the red lights, and being able to stop. So that becomes a factor when we test the roads. It's not just the intersection that you pull up to, but it's those intermittent stops every time there's a mailbox, every time there's a driveway. What is the road like in, in that location? So we have to consider as well that, you know, when snow-packed and ice-covered roads become slick, it, it, it can be really scary if the buses can't stop when pulling up to a, to a group of students. So we have to factor those things. The weather issues don't, don't, aren't just a, a six AM to three PM kind of a concern. It's, it's really twenty-four seven, and I mean that sincerely, that our team is continually monitoring the weather. Evening trips, when kids are home and doing their homework, we have buses that are going to all different kinds of events across Ohio and southeast Michigan. Weekend events, you know, saying, boy, we really lucked out, that storm landed on a Saturday, and that's always what I root for. But then we have decisions about all the different athletic teams and different events that we host on the weekends here, and then out-of-town contests. So it's not only our weather that we have to watch, but we, if we have a team heading to Cleveland for an event on a Friday night, we have to pay attention to the weather that's occurring in that location as well. So it's not only here locally during just Monday through Friday, but it is really twenty-four seven. We hear that, that today we're much softer when it comes to calling delays. Everybody thinks that it was much more challenging back when they were in school, that, that people were a lot harder and more rugged and, and not snowflakes. But, you know, why is this? Maybe it's because of, you know, the fact that we have a lot more attention on the weather and the news and the alerts and all the kinds of things we never had back in the day. So just for fun, we went back to nineteen eighty-five, you know, back to the future. So we went back to nineteen eighty-five, and we looked at the number of snow days for those years, and you can see eighty-one, eighty-two, six, one, four, five, and those are right in line with, with what we've experienced here as well. So the idea that somehow back in the day, things were much, you know, we didn't, we always went to school. The reality is, when we looked at the actual data, ah, we're, we're, we cancel about the same level as we did back then. And of course, this is something that we always talk about. We can't cancel school every time we have snow and it gets cold. We live in the north, and we're going to get snow, and we're gonna get a couple inches of snow overnight, and the roads are gonna be slippery. And there's nothing that we can do about that, and we're not gonna cancel school in those cases. So it has to be a weather event that puts additional strain on the roads and travel, but typical winter weather, we're gonna deal with that. And we have a, a great group of drivers who are very professional, who will continue to, to monitor that. So while we joke and, and we laughed about Blizzard Bill, his forecast for, for Perrysburg back in the day, we take it very, very seriously. And those decisions to cancel or not to cancel are some of the toughest decisions that you have to make, because you, you have limited information, you have the clock, you have to make that decision by, and the greatest fear is, on, on one of those questionable mornings, that you make a decision and then that there's an accident or something happens. And, and that always is, is a huge weight on all of us. So usually, you know, on a morning that we have some snow, even though it's a typical one to two inches of snow and not, not much wind, we're still nervous until all the buses come in, until all the kids get there, and then on the way home, all the buses return. So it is always a concern, and we have to weigh, you know, that, that challenge of making the decision to go and, and not. And like I said, you know, we live in the north, and it snows, and, and that's part of what we have to do to navigate. You know, one of the important aspects of checking the roads personally is that, you know, it, if we have to look people in the eye and talk about the decision we make, I always find it helpful to, to say, you know, at six AM, here were the conditions that I found when I was driving out in that twenty-eight square miles. It's a lot different than sipping cocoa at six AM or seven AM and, and watching television and thinking, or, or getting on that main road and driving, and not considering all the different things that we've talked about. So, so we always consider that weather changes. So the decision you make at six, there's been times where at eight, it's gotten much, much worse. And those are tough mornings, and sometimes knowing what it looks like now at eight AM, we probably should have delayed, or we should have canceled. And, and that sometimes happens too. And then there are those times where it's the opposite, where we're anticipating that two tons of snow, and it's coming, and then it doesn't get here. And we've made changes or adjustments or brought in the crew early. But we're fortunate that we have a great crew that, that starts at four AM as well, three AM sometimes, clearing the parking lots and sidewalks around all the school buildings, so that, that doesn't even become a factor as to whether or not we can open, having the lots cleared. And we take it for granted that, that, that happens, but we have a great group of folks. And of course, you know, bus drivers as well, we thank them, because nobody likes to drive in this weather typically. And, and being a bus driver, having all that responsibility and, and having to navigate the roads is, is, is not easy. And so we're very grateful for all that they do and, and their professionalism and the care that they take, so, in, in getting our kids where they need to go. So that's just one aspect of, of school safety. And, you know, in this time of year, in the fall, when the sun sets, and it's always in your eyes when you're driving east or west, you get that glare, those are actually probably the most dangerous days for our student drivers, because they can't see the cars, you know, they've got the visor down, the sunglasses. Usually those days, we, we see a lot more accidents than we do on a, on a winter day. So we always keep in mind that it's not only just the winter weather, but any conditions with our younger drivers can be, can be tricky. But moving on to, to school safety, this is a, a, a part of, a piece of the puzzle that is, is a really important aspect of, of all that we do. And, you know, right now, we're, we're, you know, our hearts are heavy as we begin to read more and more reports from Oxford, Michigan, and Oxford High School. This is a suburban Detroit community, not too dissimilar from Perrysburg in terms of the size of the high school and, and the number of students that attend that school district, very similar. When I worked in Michigan, I knew this community, knew the, the folks that were there, you know, a number of years ago. And, and so it certainly is, is tragic anytime it occurs, an event like this, but certainly it is even more so when it is close to home, as Oxford is. You know, we watch and we learn and we understand what happened and what we can learn from these situations when they occur across the country. And we look at our internal operations and what we do and how we operate to see if there's things that we can do differently based on this latest event. And, and certainly, there's a lot of elements, I think, that with the shooting that, that, that we've had many conversations about for our district. So I know Mrs. Price will, will kind of take over. She chairs the school safety committee, and I know she'll mention that, but we're fortunate to have her leadership on this important topic, so.
Good morning. So I'm gonna give a general overview of school safety, and want to start with first by saying everyone plays a role in this. School safety isn't one person's thing. It's not the principal's thing, it's not the SRO's thing. Our students, our employees, families, our community partners, our, certainly our SROs and our community members, everyone plays a role in keeping our students safe within our school. There's also a great deal of collaboration that occurs. So as Tom mentioned, we have a district safety committee, we have a parent safety task force, we have a district crisis team, as well as building crisis teams, we have a building, we have building threat assessment teams, we have a tech advisory committee, we'll talk a little bit about how that plays into school safety, our school nurses, and certainly our collaboration with the Wood County Health Department. The other point I'd like to make is that our pupil services department plays such a vital role in safety. The mental health aspect and that crisis response and those threat assessments are such a critical part of what we do. So the district safety committee, this is a group of individuals who volunteer to be on this committee and represent their buildings. We also have maintenance operations, some custodial support and, and some nurse representation on that district committee. And we also have representatives from our city emergency partners. So every month, we have a police representative, as well as fires invited, Wood County Sheriff attends, and so it is a collaborative effort. We discuss a variety of safety concerns from each building, as well as an overall report from community partners, and we work to collectively problem solve. Right now, in fact, we're working on problem-solving safety patrol, safety guards for the city. We're working on getting some messaging out. So just a little plug, if anyone's interested, apply to the city. We are definitely looking for some crossing guards. And so we work together each month, and certainly those face-to-face conversations or Zoom conversations are very helpful to us. Parent Safety Task Force, so this is a group that also meets monthly. There are representatives from each building. This team collaborates with the district safety committee, and they're also really a liaison for families. Their emails are posted on our website, and certainly any families that have concerns that they feel would be important to talk about at the district level, they can, of course, communicate to me, to building principals, but also to representatives on the parent safety task force that can bring those discussions to our, our group. I do want to mention that certainly if anything is an emergency or student-specific, we need people to go directly to the building or police department accordingly, but certainly more of those global district things that a parent might be wondering or want to discuss, certainly those people can be a resource. They also provide feedback to us. So, for example, last year, when we were working on the, the various COVID safety plans, we would oftentimes run by our thoughts with that group and get that parent perspective on that. As I mentioned, our pupil services department, Sarah Stockwell, our Director of Student Services and Well-being, has done such a great job of really being proactive and setting up our district crisis teams. So you can see we have student counselors, a prevention specialist, our director and assistant director of student services, social worker, head nurse, director of communications, school psychologist, Mr. Hostler, and then representatives from each of our buildings. And this group really has some specific training in how to respond to a crisis. There is a great deal that happens during that time, and it's really critical to have a, a plan with who's doing what, who's responsible for what. It's a really stressful event when those things happen. The crisis team isn't to be confused with the CPI team. Crisis Prevention Intervention are more of those behavioral emotional outbursts that students may have that a team may respond to. This is for big issues that occur within the district that really call for those multiple resources to come together and tackle that situation. There's also a difference between a major and a minor crisis. So a determination is made, again, going through these, there, there's a checklist, there's questions to determine this. And so for a major crisis, it's that full district team, and then for a minor crisis, it may just be the building teams, because each building does have a crisis team as well. Threat assessment, so Sarah, Sarah Stockwell gave a wonderful presentation, if you remember, last May at the work session with some of, with herself, as well as some of people from her department, regarding the process for threat assessments. And again, these are best practices developed by the Secret Service, and it's conducted when a person threatens to commit a violent act or engages in some type of behavior that appears to threaten. It's really a process for evaluating that threat, and the key thing here, it's a group process. So there's multiple perspectives, again, going into that situation to uncover any facts or evidence that may indicate how likely is it that this threat's going to be carried out. Ultimately, this process is about whether a student poses a threat. It's not about whether the threat was made. And it really attempts to identify individuals who pose a threat, and also whether they had that intent and means to carry it out. And so if you haven't watched that and you are interested, May fourth work, I think, believe it was May fourth work session, it's a really thorough presentation just on this portion. was May 4th work session, it's a really thorough presentation just on this portion. In addition, each building has an emergency operation plan. So, these plans are required and they are uploaded into our safe account with ODE. Portions of this plan, there's multiple facets to it, but it, it is a overall emergency operations plan for a variety of emergency situations. It includes our floor plans, a site plan, an emergency contact sheet for each building as well as a stakeholder signature page. Again, those emergency local partners sign off on this as well. And each, again, each building has one, this has to be reevaluated every year as well as fully rewritten every three years. And Tom, if you go to the next slide, that's just what that talks about and then, sorry, one more. And so, along with this plan, in addition to all the emergency drills schools do annually, there's a three-year cycle of different types of drills that go along with the emergency operations plan in addition to those. So, one's a tabletop exercise. So, during that cycle, this is where staff may do scenario-based training, but really have discussions about, you know, for example, you're in your classrooms in the morning and a non-custodial parent comes up to try to take a count of class, what do you do? And so, those are just some examples of some possible tabletop activities that we might do for training. Another type of activity is the functional exercise. So, these are things like your fire drills, your lockdown drills, but there's another component to analyzing how that went. Typically, after each of these things, you have to identify three strengths, three areas for improvement. And again, you have to enter all of this along in what that kind of connects to that emergency operations plan. And then the last one is the full-scale exercise. So, this is a little bit bigger scenario-based training, but it is in conjunction with our community partners to play out how people would respond in the various roles that people would need to take in an emergency situation. And again, a key piece with these exercises is there's that debrief that has to occur and you're really reflecting on what went well, what didn't go well, what do you need to do differently. An example I can give, when I was a principal at Woodland Elementary, we did an evacuation drill and we realized that we had some students that weren't able to, for, for a variety of reasons, weren't able to walk over the full distance over to our evacuation site. And so, following that, one of our debriefs was, we really need to get a collapsible wagon that we can have on-call. So, if we ever need to go quickly, we've got a way to easily transport a, a young child that maybe isn't able to walk that distance. School safety drills, as I mentioned, so those things I talked about before are tied to the emergency operation plan. School safety drills are something we're required to do and report every year. So, those are things like our monthly fire drills, tornado drills, they're required once a month starting in tornado season as well as additional safety drills, rapid dismissals, lockdowns, those types of things. And there's a link there if you ever want to see the types of requirements. It's, it's a little extensive, but that's in there for anyone that might want to view this. The slide deck will be in the board agenda. ALIS is another training we do. ALIS stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And really, this is a practice for, in a nutshell, again, you can do a lot of research if, if you Google this, but in a nutshell, it's really trying to get as clear communication out as you can to people during an emergency and giving them that power to make those decisions to keep their students safe, whatever way they might need to do that. And I think the key piece with this is that we're very sensitive to the developmental needs and ages of our students. So, for example, when we review this at the elementary, typically we, we may use a book, I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared, to just start that conversation. We don't certainly tell our elementary students, oh, be prepared, someone's coming in to hurt you. One thing that we might do, for example, with our youngest students is play, I'm, teach them, I'm not, or sorry, teach them to stop and follow me. So, it's essentially a game of Simon Says where throughout the day, you might be doing an activity and the teacher might say, okay, kids, stop, follow me. And they go a different way out of their classroom and out of the building. So, that's an example of a way that we may practice. It's actually a safety drill, but for a student, it's, it's just part of that routine. And again, working through ALIS training, each building does have those conversations about what is developmentally appropriate for students to do in terms of having those conversations. And then certainly a parent's role in an emergency. So, this is a piece that's actually going to be in the next parent safety task force newsletter. We've done some work on putting together a summary of, of, in our opinion, what would be best practice as well as obviously certainly doing some research on best practices for emergency situations. One of the most important things a parent can do is make sure their contact information is up to date in our student information system. The other important thing to note is opt-in is required for text messaging. So, it never fails anytime there's any type of emergency situation, we have families frustrated because they didn't receive a text message, you have to opt into that. And there is directions on how to do that on the notification system tab on our website. And it will also be in the parent safety task force newsletter coming up before Christmas break. Everyone's first reaction as a parent, when that emergency situation would happen, would be you want to get to your kid, right? That's natural, that's certainly understandable, but it really can be problematic during a crisis. We really need those emergency routes to remain clear. So, we do not want parents en masse to come to a school unless they're, unless they're directed to do so during those crisis situations. We also need people to avoid calling the school or district offices. If you've ever had an emergency situation happen, those lines can get clogged very quickly and we really need those lines to be able to remain open. I can tell you in a building, the first priority of building staff is to keep the students safe and calm. So, that's what the main focus is on and we worked closely with Rachel Zicker to develop a communication plan for those emergency situations because when your focus is on the students, it's hard to focus on the students and also be communicating out via, you know, school messenger or text messages to parents in real time. So, we have a, a working on always refining that communication process for that. We do want parents to stay close to their phone. Again, that number that you've provided for our, our student information system, your phone number, that's the information that those messages are going to go to. So, ultimately too, talk to your student about students, or talk to your child about school safety. And if there's questions, certainly reach out to your building administrator, myself, members of the parent safety task force, we're here to help answer questions. We also have the Safe for Ohio tip line. So, this is a free service that accepts calls and texts 24/7. It allows anyone to anonymously report information to school officials. So, when that's reported, what happens then is those are filtered to the emergency contacts and the emergency operations plan. And so, we encourage anyone in the community to be able to use this, this line. There's also the crisis text line. Anyone can reach out with someone that's trained to listen and respond to people that may be struggling, mental health or struggling with depression, some other type of situation. The crisis text line is also another free resource that people can use. These are also posted on our website as well as multiple places throughout school buildings. This will also be included in the, in the parent safety task force newsletters as well. Digital safety, so that's another piece people don't often think of, but in this day and age, digital safety is definitely an area that we focus on. Obviously, our filtering systems for the district, we do have a district tech advisory committee. We've been doing some, some pretty extensive work lately on a process for ensuring that we are being very conscientious about any type of site we're using where a student may be required to log into, that we're really doing our research on the privacy policies and checking that those sites are safe for students. Digital citizenship is something we work with students on, particularly when they get their one-to-one device, but that's something we continually just talk to students about that online presence, how something that they post is permanent and how really they, they need to be so aware of things that they're, they're doing, their online presence. And, and parents too, being aware of what their students are doing online. And then, of course, family education opportunities. COVID-19 is another area that in the past recent years has certainly been on the forefront of everyone's mind. You know, certainly having our COVID support team, the whole contact tracing process, which, you know, the guidance frequently changes, so we're having to adapt often with those types of things. Our school nurses have played such a critical role in this and then certainly collaboration with the Wood County Health Department. SROs, again, it's not one person's thing, but Mr. Officer Dayton and Officer Cole certainly play a vital role for us. And really, the goal of this program is to ensure that safe learning environment and really to build relationships, fostering that positive school climate, getting to know the kids so they feel comfortable coming to the school resource officers when there is an issue. And really, it's about creating those partnerships. Mental health supports, as I mentioned before, those are so critical in school safety. Certainly, our school counselors, our school psychologists, our social workers, we have a prevention specialist at the high school with that focused on drug and alcohol prevention, and then certainly student and family engagement coordinator. Such a critical thing in safety, and Tom, if you want to go to the next slide, is really building relationships. Having relationships with each other is the number one way to help keep students safe. Making sure people know if something's off with the kid, investing in, training for visitor engagement, all of those things really pay off in spades to help keep students safe. Certainly, our PBIS, our jacket weighs a component of that as well. Also, we survey our students. So, we take an OVAUS bullying prevention program survey and our buildings do use those results to look at what might need to be adjusted, whether it's supervision or other specific types of discussions with kids that might need to happen. And then certainly the Adamus Youth Survey that recently came out, I don't, I, I want to make sure people understand, this is really critical information for the county to get so that they can plan for services that they would like to offer to school districts and to people in the community. So, that feedback from our, our students is really critical to be able to make sure that that money is being allocated where the greatest need is. And we're always improving. So, we did have a vulnerability assessment conducted by an outside group educator school safety network this past fall and our buildings are currently working on taking that information and putting together specific plans with that. Importance of debriefing, anytime there's a crisis, we talk about it, we talk about what we could do better for the next time or our problems were. Certainly, the parent safety task force, that's a great proactive way to build relationships with our parents and get information out and get that feedback from a parent perspective. And then, of course, ongoing professional development. So, safety isn't one thing you do one time and then you can check it off the list. You're continually evolving, continually looking at best practices and implementing those things.
Yeah, and, and, you know, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Price. I know there's, there's been an evolution of, of safety plans and I know Brooke has certainly mentioned those. When you think back to the, the 90s, when school shootings just were beginning, for example, the different kinds of things that, that we used to do then, staff had to remember different code words that, that you were to read over the PA system. And then you, in the middle of teaching, you heard this code word come over the PA and you knew exactly what it meant, or you had to go to your desk and look up what that code word meant. And, and that was really cumbersome in, in terms of, of, well, we have subs in the building that don't know those words. And if you're teaching and you didn't hear it or you forget, so that, that evolved into safety plans where there were flip charts, where there was a, a page for every type of event. Well, you can't plan for every type of event. And, and what we have now is, as Mrs. Price mentioned with, with ALIS training, is we have dedicated and, and very thoughtful staff in empowering them to make decisions in the moment to do what's best, to care for those students that are in their charge is, is where we've moved to. So, we've gone from this very prescribed where, you know, the announcement comes on in the middle of class and Mr. Lockett is in the building and then you have to remember that means to lock your door to basically now getting on the PA and saying, there is somebody in A Hall who is in the building, you know, lockdown in A Hall, get out, being very prescriptive in terms of what happens. So, there's been this evolution. After an event happens, and, and Mrs. Price, maybe you want to comment about this, but we, we kind of, there was a bomb threat when you were principal at Woodland Elementary and she mentioned that there was this process that, you know, they, they problematic and we had to troubleshoot, but after that event, there was a meeting with your staff, a meeting with district officials where we went through.
Emergency event. I know last year where there was a situation at Toth during a lockdown during, I believe it was a evening event that they have with students. Anytime those things happen, we come together after that situation, we bring in multiple people that played a role in that situation and we talk through what went well, what do we need to change, what would be better if this ever happens again to ensure we can keep people even safer than we were able to. So, those things, it's not that something happens and we're like, oh, phew, glad that was okay. We do continually analyze those things and then work to make improvements.
I think one of the challenges that we're up against is social media, the regular media and because there was a day when things would happen and we would have time to plan and craft a message, get all the facts, have an understanding, work with the police department, and then that information would go out. And oftentimes what's happening is when the bomb threat, we're in the middle of dealing with the crisis and we're getting calls from different outlets asking for information, wanting to know what's happening. People are posting to social media, things that may not be true as the event is taking place, which causes panic with parents and families. You know, so in that bomb threat situation, the rumor gets out, there's a bomb threat at, at Woodland, parents are driving to that location. And if there is in fact a bomb there, we don't want more people coming to that location, we want people getting away from that location. So, the police have to barricade, block off roads and, and do that sort of a thing. So, trying to manage the crisis and then handle getting information out there and parents deserve, they're very nervous and they want that information in real time and we don't often have it. And, and we're trying to manage, you know, where do we move the kids to and how do we handle this? So, yeah.
And Tom, if I could do one more piece of advice for families, please, 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 if your child receives any type of social media snap or anything that would be a threat, report it directly to the police, report it directly to the building principal. Because what's happening in a lot of situations, as recently as last week with Penta, for example, things can spiral out of control so quickly and just messages keep getting forwarded from student to student, I heard, I heard, but no one can trace it back to any type of original threat. And it really takes the police's attention away and takes them down multiple rabbit holes. It's quite time-consuming. And of course, they're going to do due diligence and look through all of those things, but please have a conversation with your children. If they hear something from a fellow classmate directly or they receive something that is a threat, report it directly to the police, forwarding to someone else saying, hey, I heard from so-and-so. It just, again, spirals out of control very, very quickly. And so, we really need to make sure anyone receiving any type of thing that would be perceived as a threat is reporting it directly to the authorities, not, not continuing a forwarded chain of, of social media text messages.
And that's a great reminder. I know after, after Sandy Hook, if you recall, there were, and that was right during this time, you know, during December, there were stories across the whole country that there was going to be another event, that this was part of a network of people that wanted to harm other children in schools. And it was going to be Friday and there was these rumors circulating with social media. And the Friday after Sandy Hook, many districts closed because of the rumors and the intensity of those rumors in communities. In Perrysburg, we heard about those rumors, we talked to our police department about bringing in extra officers. And really, that, that event changed our relationship then. Chief Paez, I called him and said, there's a lot of rumors that there's going to be another event at a school and we know that this is happening nationwide. There's no credible information that there is a threat against Perrysburg schools or Perrysburg High School, but could you send some extra officers that morning? It'll make everybody feel better to see. So, he made the arrangement. So, we had officers at our school locations in the morning as parents were coming in. And then we brought in officers to the high school to, to walk the halls. And this is before we had SROs. That action made people very uneasy. Having an officer walking in the hallways created the opposite effect of calming people down. And that's when we knew that there was a problem. And it wasn't the Sandy Hook response, but it was, we had to change how our students interacted and viewed the police and how we were using the police. And, and that led to where we are today. And I think as, as, as Mrs. Price has talked about, the relationship, the meetings, the ongoing communication, I think that moment, that week changed our trajectory in terms of student safety and how we're looking at cooperating. So, that was a big event for us in terms of recognizing we can do better and, and we're always asking that question. We mentioned 1985 at the beginning of this presentation with snow days, but think about how communication was done in 1985 when there was a school event, a student death or a threat. You had a phone. That's how you, you know, how did you communicate with families then? And today, there are so many different options and so many different ways that we can utilize in a positive way to communicate. And- in a positive way to communicate and in real time. And so, we're thankful that we're always looking for that way, that better way to communicate information as soon as we have it available. And finally, we're always a little bit limited with what we can share. And I know that's frustrating for parents. Parents want to know, who made the threat? What was the threat? Where are we? And when things are happening, there's sometimes an investigation. And if we come out immediately as the police is investigating and saying there was a threat made, we have one student that we're questioning, and there might be more out there, that would then send a signal to those other students that the police is, they're investigating something. So we have to work in tandem with them, not to interfere with their investigation. And that means being limited with what we can share. Also, there are federal laws that prevent us from sharing information about our students. Student discipline, well, what happens to that student who did X, Y, and Z? We can't report that, just like we can't report a student who was caught vaping on a bus or something like that. We can't report those things. We can't release their names. And so, it's not that we're not trying to be transparent, it's just that those are the laws. And that social media, the digital footprint that Mrs. Price talked about, that split-second decision today to post that thing, to type something out and send it out to social media or post a video, people today can't determine what's in people's hearts and what's in their minds. And there are too many headlines of people who have carried out some of those kinds of evil thoughts. So that split-second decision to post that, that you think is funny, or that video can have life-changing consequences for you and your family, because the police, the schools, we are not in a position to always determine what is and what isn't. And going to an airport and yelling "bomb," if you're joking or not, it doesn't matter, you're going to end up in the backseat of a police car going somewhere. And that's how it's become with school threats. It is a no-go, and we have to be that way. And that's a challenge. So, because we're dealing with young people who are figuring out what those boundaries are, and we just can't afford to always take gambles, and that balance of students who say something stupid and they don't mean it versus students who are troubled, and maybe this is a precursor to things to come, it's hard for us to tell the difference. So, but we'll open up to any questions. Thank you, Mrs. Price.
You know, no questions on my part, but that last thing, you know, that last part you just said there, it certainly resonates with, resonates with me as a parent. That annual reminder, you know, talked to my son the other day, you know, it's, careful what you post, careful what you even say, because a joke may not be a joke, and to your point, you don't know what's going to get interpreted how. So, you know, kindness is always better. And the other thing that's just been rolling through my mind, thinking about this and kind of being a part of this district for as many years, you know, as a parent and on the board and seeing the evolution of all this, is, you know, just an appreciation. Because, Mrs. Price said, of all the different parties that are involved in our school safety, parents, administrators, the police, the overall community, you know, being able to identify what the needs are, physical security, mental well-being, and then being able to advocate, and just as important, the community supporting what is needed to change our entry points into the buildings, or add counselors, or have another SRO, and the investment in relationships with the police department and the rest of the community. I mean, all of that matters. And I sit here with the events that have occurred up in Michigan, you know, and how close to home it is, and just, you know, thankful and appreciative of all the work that has been done, will continue to be done, because it's a journey to keep our kids as safe as possible. It's important, and again, I'm appreciative of it.
One of the things that I would ask Brooke and Mr. Hustler, as I jotted down a couple of questions, parents, teachers, the communication, the district has such a huge role. We're not talking about mathematics and science and history now, we're talking about lives. You know, talk about mental health, we talk about sex education, we talk about the COVID situation, but what type of questions or what type of communication, and you may not have the answer today or some thoughts, but what should parents talk to their kids about with active shooters in schools? Because it's happened for so many years now that our families are grown up with it. They're grown up with fire drills and tornado drills and ALIS training, but the conversation that parents should have, not just, "Hey, you shouldn't post this or do this," but if this happens, response, how do you react? What conversation should they have?
So, to answer your question, I really think it depends on the age of the child. A lot of times, what I would recommend for parents to do is, as they receive, for example, schools will often send out an email to families when there might be a certain type of safety drill that was conducted. That can really be a catalyst for some great conversation with your child. So when you get that message that we conducted an evacuation drill today, or that message that we practiced X, Y, or Z today, to really use that as a catalyst for your child. How did that go? Any questions you have? Do you feel like you know what to do? You know, having those continued conversations. In terms of how to talk to students after a particular crisis occurs, there are quite a few resources in the Parent Safety Task Force newsletters that have links to National Counseling Association, for example, that has a lot of tips for how to do that. And so, that, to your point, Ray, that's another piece we can maybe highlight through the Parent Safety Task Force newsletters, is some of those resources with tips on how to talk to your child about certain things. But my advice would be, when you get those messages about those drills, to really use that as a conversation with your child. The other thing I would also say, as a parent, if you talk to your child, if they've done a safety drill and their child says no, I would also encourage you to reach out to the building principal, because sometimes, particularly your youngest children, don't even realize that they're practicing a safety drill while they're actually doing a safety drill sometimes, just because of the nature and the way that the teachers are able to conduct those drills, because it's a balance, right? You need kids to feel safe coming to school. You can't create this fear and anxiety for children that are going to cause them not to want to come to class and feel safe. At the same time, you can't bury your head in the sand and pretend like it's never going to happen here. So it's really that constant balance that we're working through. And so, I guess that would be my advice, is use those communications about those specific drills when they happen as conversation starters. And then also, feel free, click on the Parent Safety Task Force newsletters. There's a lot of resources in there with tips on how to talk to your kids about school safety, particularly during a crisis.
Thank you.
I think one thing from Chief Pius, when we spoke, and he talked about awareness, and I think that's something, too, that parents can talk to their children as well, especially, you know, age-appropriate. But Chief talked about, when he goes to a restaurant or goes to a store, he immediately looks at where the exits are, where the doors are, where, you know, just that awareness so that you're going into an environment, you're paying attention. What would be, if something happened, what would be my route out? What would I do in a situation? And I think that's always helpful. You don't want to create, as Mrs. Price said, this kind of constant fear, but, you know, that awareness. When we set up this boardroom, we looked at exits, we looked at where things go. We had the police chief take a look at how we're controlling board meetings, and, you know, anytime you're doing those things, you want those to be a factor, and I think it's just good planning. So having conversations, one of the things that we talk about is reunification points. And so, talk to, you know, students about, if something were to happen at school, you know, what is the plan, you know, where do we meet? You know, the cell phones and all those kinds of things, you know, getting the word out. So it's just beginning to do that. Parents are familiar with that because they do it at home. You know, if there's a fire in our home, you've had the conversation, how to get out, where do we meet, where's the rendezvous point? And I think it's just that continuation forward with school, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Hustler, Mrs. Price. Always a topic that should stay at the front and center for sure. That takes us then to the item number four, which would be the consent agenda, have a motion to accept the consent agenda, be items four dash one and five.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or discussions? Hearing done, a roll call, please.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Paulman.
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us then to item number six. Is there anything else the board would like to discuss or have bring up at this time?
I noticed on the news that Bowling Green had canceled a bus route on the way home. And then they went on to say that they're doing rolling cancellations because they know they can't fill all the routes every day. So they try not to cancel the same route every day. I thought, it's just a problem that's really big and it's just there for everybody.
Yeah, it's an issue for us. We've had to double up some routes. We haven't had to cancel any routes, but it is an inconvenience and we have to be extra careful when that happens to make sure the students are getting on the right bus and being accounted for. And that's not just the driver's responsibility, but our building, too. But, you know, I think we have some prospects with folks that are training in the pipeline, but we have a number that are retiring here in January. We've had a couple out with medical leaves drivers, so that's a concern for us. So we appreciate the parents' understanding, and we're continuing to try to find those drivers to help fill those gaps for us, too.
Anybody else? If not, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Paulman.
Yes. Adjourns the meeting. We'll see you at your committee meetings and then at the Monday meeting, December 20th. Thank you very much.